Ah, I'm going to state again, but the next topic is, the work session is on employment projections 2025, the comp plan. We are going to start with the staff presentation as usual and go from there.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Councillors. For the record, Oliver Ojako and this discussion today, just for background, is based on the previous decision the council made on population for Clark County up to 2045, which represent a 1.4 growth rate going forward to 2020, 2045. After the council made that decision, we engaged Mr. Scott Bailey, who is sitting with us here today, to help provide us using that population, the equivalent job numbers if we assume a one-to-one ratio. What that means is for every household, there is one job. That is a very noble policy if we can stay with that because we are not even very close to the one-to-one ratio. So it's a great, great honor for me to have Scott Bailey here. Some of you are familiar with Scott. He's our expert on employment forecast, employment information. He's the regional economist representing at the Employment Security Department for Southwest Washington. So I'll give an opportunity for Scott to introduce himself. I may not do a good job before we get into the presentation. So Scott, you have the mic. Thank you for agreeing to come, not only coming and doing the work, but also being here in person. Thank you.
This, okay, we're live. Good morning and thanks, Oliver. It's once again a pleasure to work with you and your staff. And so I'm the regional economist for the Employment Security Department. This is my 34th year. So I was here for the very first Growth Management Act Plan back in the mid-'90s and got pulled in by the CREDC to help look at what jobs would be 20 years out. And I've used more or less the same methodology every five years since then, which is not a forecast. If you haven't figured out yet, economists are pretty awful at forecasting. How many economists said we would be in a recession by now? Yeah, and we're nowhere close. But it's, what I've done is if the county has this minute, this population in this age group, which is the projection we get from the Office of Financial Management, what's that imply for jobs? So I look at the age group. I look at what's the percentage of people in an age group who are likely to be in the labor force, to get a total labor force? How many will be unemployed? I use the long-term average around 5% to get how many employed residents we have and then translate that into my best guess of what, out of that total job count, how many of those will be construction jobs? How many manufacturing jobs? How many retail and so on? And a 20-year projection like that, of course, is, you can pick apart a lot of different things. But what I've tried to do is make my assumptions very transparent so that if anybody can come in and see why I've made that assumption. And they're, I think they're pretty reasonable assumptions. The, a couple of things that are, that have always been wild cards and we have some new ones this time around. One has always been what's the cross-county commuting going to be like? So it's been roughly a third of the county working over in the Portland metro area for decades now. That jobs-to-housing ratio is lower for Clark County than any other county in the metro area. So what I projected in this one is that if you want, your goal is to have that one-to-one jobs-housing ratio, then that implies a higher number of jobs in Clark County, given the population, which means in turn that you will have to zone more land for industrial and commercial to accommodate those jobs. And the good part of having a better jobs-housing ratio is that improves the fiscal situation for local governments. Residential property tax does not pay for itself in terms of the services needed. You need that balance between commercial, industrial and residential. And so that's, that's, that's a real positive from moving towards that one-to-one goal is to improve the fiscal situation for local governments. One of the new wild cards is how many people are going to be working remotely? A, nobody knows. B, I think we hit a pretty good limit with the pandemic. That is, if somebody was going to be able to work remotely, they were. What we don't have is very good local information on, is this hybrid or completely remote? We do have some national data on that. And by the way, that national data shows those percentages of people working remotely in either one of those situations, hybrid or total, have changed very little in the last year. So I think we're kind of at a stability point despite you hear some big companies saying, you're going to come back to work and you hear workers saying, oh, no, we're not. So it's interesting to watch that. But I think we're, I'm assuming that that percentage doesn't change much going forward over the next 20 years. I don't know if that, that will be true or not, but we'll see. So that's kind of what's, what's there. And you can take a look at the numbers until your eyeballs get, that's about it. The other wildcard is climate change. You know, 20 years ago, we would say, oh, climate change is going to really start having an impact in 2070, 2080. It's arriving a little early. So it's already impacting us and of course, Canada this year. It's kind of a rotation, you know, Australia was burning down a couple of years ago, Europe, Canada, the Northwest, California. Those impacts are going to get more and more serious going forward. We might see more climate migration. We're already seeing it. A fair amount of the migration out of Central America is totally climate-based. It's not totally climate-based, but there's a lot of, the impact on indigenous farmers in Central America. They can't make a living, many of them anymore, and that's part of the reason why they're migrating north. But you look at Phoenix, you look at the Imperial Valley in California, the San Antonio Valley and so on. So my question I have for you as you're planning is, and I don't know the answer, what's the water supply here going forward? How many people can we accommodate in this county in a sustainable way? And what kind of balance do we want to have in terms of natural spaces versus developed land? And if, and I don't think it's an if, is as areas in the United States that have been very fruitful, unintended, in terms of agriculture, as those areas run out of water, get too hot, what's that going to do for the demand for agricultural land in Clark County? Which is, I mean, the old joke is the number one crop for agriculture was housing. How is that going to change the dynamics over the next 20 years? I just want to throw that out. Again, I have no axe to grind here, but as questions to think about going forward as you look at this. And I think I'll stop there. And by the way, the local labor market, all things considered, is in pretty good shape right now. Low unemployment. If you look at our recovery from COVID, it's, I think we're number two in the state behind Adams County in terms of job growth. If you look at that peak-to-peak comparison of right before the Great Recession in 2007 versus 2019, right before COVID, fastest job growth in the state, much faster than the state or the nation. So Clark County has been doing really well in terms of jobs growth. The other question is how do we transition that and think about sustainability? And not that bigger is better, but smarter is better, higher per capita income is better as opposed to more and more and more, just in terms of numerics. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Scott. Councillors, with that, both Scott and I and Jose will be here to answer questions. Scott did provide us a memo outlining some of the, if you may call it, factors that he considered in the, in the employment projection for us. And that memo is also posted on the county council grid. And so with that, I will turn it over to Jose, who will just go over our PowerPoint presentation and then we'll take questions from the council. Part of the things that we will also bring the council to know is that following the council, we are scheduling a hearing August 1st. And I will also invite Scott to be here for that hearing where the council will be selecting an employment number for us to use. And then we will engage our city partners in the allocation of the population and employment numbers. And then come back for your approval of that. So with that, let me turn it over to Jose to go over our PowerPoint presentation. And like I said, we're here.
Madam Chair, Oliver, I would like to ask this gentleman at least one question.
Sure, go ahead, Councillors.
Before we dig into hopefully a lot more detail here. So one disconnect I've been watching in the nation and something you mentioned was, you know, hybrid, remote. And the fact that some of our cities are now experiencing vacant office buildings. And it's going on in earnest in San Francisco right now and other big cities. And to some extent, Portland is starting to see that. But we're not seeing that here. We still have, at least what I'm hearing, is we still have pressure on building and filling office buildings. So where is that heading for Clark County? Where's that heading for Washington State? While I'm watching other states have now empty buildings and are wondering what their value is and how are they going to repurpose them? All because of the hybrid and remote issue that I agree is probably stabilized at this point. Do you have some thoughts on that?
So that's not my real area of expertise. I would guess that in the short term, in places like, you know, New York City, same, same issue in terms of vacancies, it's going to impact commercial construction going forward. And there'll be a lag time of catching up. The repurposing thing, like there's been talk about, can we turn these, some of these buildings into apartments? In many cases, that's going to be too expensive. The cost for doing that when you, when you actually pencil it out is, can be pretty prohibitive. So I don't know how much that kind of repurposing will actually happen. And it may just be time for demand to catch up with supply. And, you know, San Francisco, I think that's been exacerbated by not only remote, but by the big tech layoffs down there, which so far have been pretty minimal in the state of Washington. I've been tracking that both in terms of our employment estimates and in terms of looking at unemployment insurance claims. And we've seen some pickup, but it's again, pretty minimal so far. Knock on wood.
Chair, I have a couple of quick questions for Scott. Thanks so much. It's great to have your years of experience and perspective here. I read this this morning, I'll read it a few more times, your memo. But am I right in understanding that there are more people commuting from Oregon into Clark County for jobs?
Yes, that's been a slow, steady increase. And I'm sort of the classic. So it was great when I started here in 1989, initially on C-Trans, taking the bus to just a few blocks from here to the Job Service Center. And I've been working remotely for six or seven years now.
And so that, is that likely to be a continual trend or is that another thing we can't really know?
So I, I think it will continue, especially as we develop more high-quality jobs here. And I mean, if you look at commuting, the history of commuting in say, Washington County with Multnomah County, at first it was very uneven. And then it, over the years, it evened out. So it's a parking lot during rush hour both ways. And I think that will slowly happen, although it's a little more limited when you're, when you've got two bridges. But I think it will be more balanced going forward.
Thanks for that. And you've mentioned under this population scenario that we selected that Clark County will become the second densest county in the state.
Continue to be.
Continue to be, because that was my question, if we are right now or that would be. Okay, that's all for now.
I have nothing to add. I will also say, and I think Scott mentioned, and this is Oliver again, you know, in the, in terms of both commuting to Oregon and vice versa, some of that will also depend, even though relatively speaking, we don't know what the cost of the toll is going to be. But that could also play some impact on the commuting, which we don't know yet until that goes into effect. The councillor mentioned about the office vacancy. Scott is correct, we haven't been seeing that here. But if we, if we get to Clark County, I think what we will see is repurposing of those facilities, as Scott indicated, it would be very difficult in terms of cost to repurpose, repurpose those for apartments. But broadly speaking, what that will also do, that it might reduce your, if it is land for commercial, it may reduce the demand for that, just going forward. What we didn't include here is e-commerce. We don't know what the impact that will do relative to the commercial space. And going forward, we don't know yet at this point. But those, those things were also included or considered in the, in the employment forecast. So with that, let me turn it over to Jose to go over our slides and then take questions after that, Councillors.
Good morning, Councillors. Jose Alvarez with Community Planning. So I'm just going to give you a high-level overview of essentially the work that Scott has done. And I think it's good that you're having questions for him and taking advantage of him while he's here. Tremendous resource. So again, a high-level overview, the employment projection, confirming the 2025 plan update projection, what the next steps are, and then comments and questions that you may have. So in terms of points of consideration, the Growth Management Act doesn't require jurisdictions to plan for a particular number of jobs. So it's different than what we, what you looked at for population. So with OFM, you're required to provide a range and choose from that range. For employment, you have a little more discretion. Nothing's provided from state. We contract with, we work with Scott to get a projection. So, and we use some of these assumptions to get a fork, a projection for your, for your consideration. Jobs, employment is an important consideration for sizing UGAs along with the residential development. We look at commercial and industrial land for jobs. And so some of the categories that we, that Scott has is we sort of fit that into a commercial and industrial model and see if we have the right amount of acreage and see if we need to make adjustments to that spatial, to see if there, whether there's a spatial mismatch or not. Again, as mentioned before, there's a jobs-to-household ratio that we've used in the past to get to a one-to-one. We're currently at about 0.85 to one. And in Scott's data, it shows the, sort of the four-county metro region and we're sort of at the bottom of that. Up until 2019, I think we were closer to 0.9. We were doing really well up until prior to the pandemic. So we've dropped down a little from then. And so the, as mentioned, to get to that one-to-one in that 2045 period requires a lot more, far exceeding that in the interim. So we'll be getting, in order to get the one-to-one, to raise that 0.85, you're going to have to exceed the one-to-one ratio in the interim in these 20-year periods. So it's a very aggressive approach to employment. Next slide. Again, the, the base that we used was off of the projection that the council adopted for population, which is the 718 figure. We used the person-per-household from the ACS. The most recent estimate is 2.67 persons per household. And that comes out to about 269,000 households for the labor force and employed residents. There's about 350,000 folks in the labor force in the county. Scott relies on the Bureau of Labor Statistics, sort of that 10-year projection.
The slide, because I don't, there you go. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you.
So one of the things to take into consideration is the projected unemployment rate, which Scott mentioned, based on historic, is about 5%. And then the aging of the population as we, you know, get to the baby boomers and beyond. It's one of the issues that we, OFM had raised with their projections. So next slide. So in order to get to that one-to-one ratio, there's an estimate of 269,000 jobs at the end of the 2045 period. Again, we talked about the remote work. The change in remote work is assumed to be minimal. It does take, I think, up to 20% of the current, over 20% of the current workforce is working remotely. And then the cross-county commuting, the net employment of the jobs-housing ratio, you know, how many gross non-farm jobs will be located in the county? That's what we're trying to get an estimate for. The net cross-county commuters. So the decline from 24% to 17%, it's more jobs in the county, either fewer people commuting across the river or more people across the river commuting to Clark County. Are the two ways that that's reduced? And then again, the, the ratio of non-farm jobs to housing is 0.85.
Madam Chair, I want to quickly just make sure I understand this slide. So the 0.85 that we're currently at, does that translate to an estimate of 269,000 jobs that we need? Or is, so what is that delta if that, do you understand my question?
Yes, I, if you go to the next slide, I think that'll. So in order to get to the one-to-one ratio by 2045, we would have a total of 269,000 jobs, about a 17% cross-county commuting. So there would be a net increase of 88,100 jobs in that 20-year period. And we're at about 180 currently.
And one other quick question. As far as the number of persons per household, is that a stable number? Is that an accurate number? Is that something we look at as well as far as adjusting?
Again, that's one of those, what's going to happen in 20 years. I did find, I think it was a Brookings Institute estimate of what that would be going forward. And their conclusion was while there's some forces pushing that number down, some pushing it up, probably very little net change over the foreseeable future.
And I think as an interesting aside, in doing our previous comprehensive plans, I think in the first plan, we'd assumed a smaller jobs or household size, I think at 2.33. And then that sort of continually moved up. And so it seems like we're, it's been 2.66, I think, the last couple of planning cycles. And yeah, it looks like it'll continue going forward. So our recommendation is for you to consider the scenario that Scott has developed. We're going to have the public hearing in August. And then we'll coordinate with the local jurisdictions to complete the population and employment allocation. Part of that will be vacant built lands model that will have a presentation at the end of August with our GIS team working to, on a refactor of that model to sort of re, sort of constructing it in a way that makes it operate more efficiently, but with the same assumptions that have been in it previously. Next slide. So if you have any questions?
You're on mute, but I think you said go ahead. So thank you. Appreciate you coming here. We would love to have you on board of the county. I think we have some open positions here. No, I really appreciate your expertise in coming in here today. The one question that I have is, when we look at how, like, you know, we're looking at like the number of jobs that we're wanting to produce. But how do we look at the quality of jobs? How do we adjust for that? And how do we plan, like, you know, we're kind of like figuring a figure of number of acres needed, you know, overall. But what do those acres consist of currently? You know, how are they, how are they developed? Are they, do they have the infrastructure? Do they have the energy available, you know, to support the types of jobs and industry that we're hoping to come into the county? How do we pull this from just kind of like, this is the number of jobs we want? This is the number of acres that we need? How do we refine that and create a better path towards bringing good quality jobs to our community?
So if you go into the gory details of the projection, it's not only the total jobs, but how many of those would be construction jobs? So what's the delta on that in terms of new construction jobs? Same with manufacturing, same with retail. The first thing they teach you in economics is that if you make a projection, don't go back and look at it. And then the second thing is if you do, don't tell anybody about it. But I looked at the 2024 projection I made in 2004 and it was pretty good. So there were, you know, 17,000 jobs projected in this sector and we're currently at 16 plus. So it gives me a little bit more confidence. But it's out of that, if we're looking at what kind of industries typically use industrial land, industrial land, then we can get the delta off of manufacturing, of some wholesale, some transportation. I forget the exact industry breakdown. But that is where the land use experts take over to say, what kind of land do we need? But I will just say in terms of industrial land is different from a lot of other land use types in that you need more vacant lands, more different types of parcel. Wetlands has been a big concern historically. Transportation access, and of course, the surrounding area, you don't want to build something noisy next to residential. Those kind of things are important. So you need to over, oversupply in that sense for industrial land because of the, there's such a variety of different users. And we have had a pretty chronic shortage in the Portland metro area of industrial land for a long time. And that's a real, you know, potential for the county is to invest more in that land would give us a real competitive advantage.
And Madam Chair, if I will, I mean, that's one of the prime reasons why we should have an economic policy advisor to help inform us of all, you know, that's the intersection of land use and development. Knife River is an example. And I know, and we have mixed reviews here on how to use our railroad. But economic development is an important issue and will always remain so. And I think if we had a skilled person in that job advising us, it's now been vacant going on five years, it's, it's a gap to help answer the questions you just asked. Thank you.
Got a question that pertains to cross-county employment, which actually is a pretty big challenge in our area because we have the goal obviously needed of creating better jobs, higher paying jobs in Clark County for our own workers. And yet, to the extent that that attracts Oregonians, I think about their policy for not attracting, but they're successful anyway, our, our Clark County workers to come across the border to Oregon. And specifically, when our workers go across the border, they have to pay Oregon income tax. That is quite disincentive, I would say, in, in, in some circles for, for movement of workers. So as I think over from a policy point of view, and I'm, I'm not asking you to be the policy person here, but have you seen efforts from a policy perspective that more or less equalize this so that the between county, cross-county pollination from, from jobs and high paying jobs is equitable? Scott?
Yeah, I haven't seen policy initiatives around that. You know, and, and if you live in Oregon and work in Clark County, you pay the income tax. I think it's, you know, I like to think of us as one big region. And I think if you're looking for a job, you think of us as one big labor market. And so it's where, where's the best opportunity? And would somebody say, okay, well, there's a, you know, I pay a 5% really, when, when you go through all the deductions and whatnot, it turns out to be about 5% of my income in, in income tax. So that's the differential I look at. But it's, you know, it's more than pay. It's benefits, it's, you know, all, all those other intangibles around the quality of your job, not to mention what's available at the time that you're looking. So if, if you all want to go ahead and institute an income tax to.
Stop that. I do have a kind of.
Parent through, you know, I have to say this, Washington State has the most regressive tax system in the country. Low-income people in, in this community pay twice as much of their income in taxes, in state and local taxes than low-income people in Oregon. So that's where the inequity.
I do have a general question that somewhat impacts jobs. Where are we at in the process on the compound development? You know, we, we kind of hear the, and it's kept under the rug, it's kind of proprietary. You know, what's Vancouver going to do? What's CAMHS going to do? What's Battleguard going to do as far as their request for further incorporation, if any? At what point does that become more public, a more of a public discussion as it impacts the movement of UGAs for, for incorporation? Where are we at on that?
Thank you, Councilor Medviggi. That's a good question. However, it is driven by each of the jurisdictions in terms of what directions that they want to grow. We don't dictate for them what parcel to annex. However, it has been the county policy to support annexation. It's my understanding that the city of Vancouver is going to be updating the annexation blueprint. And when they do, it will become public so that we, the council will, or the county will continue to follow that. And when they annex an area, we look at the potential physical impact to the county and consider that in our support, one way or the other. So I'm looking forward to when the city, in particular, the city of Vancouver completes the annexation blueprint. For the other small jurisdictions, that is dictated by their own policy and their own council in what direction they would like to go. To some extent, that is also driven by property owners who wants to be part of a particular jurisdiction. And there's different variation of annexation methodology that any of the cities may undertake consistent with the annexation provision in statute. Councilor, one of the things I would like to mention, I think we did provide you with an issue paper number three. I know Jose was going to touch upon that. We did provide you just a very brief information based on our 2023 vacant buildable lands run. The numbers in there are preliminary. I just want to emphasize that, and I know Jose is going to as well. We will be working with our GIS staff and our local jurisdictions to firm that run up before we make the numbers final. Just want to emphasize that that is preliminary number in that issue paper one, issue paper three.
Related to that, Oliver, it has been mentioned clearly that zoning more land for business is a good business decision if, or a good decision for the county, I should say, really, for given the direction that we want to go for that one to one ratio we've talked about as a goal. And we've also talked about improving the situation for employers by getting policies and all that would align with being able to execute that one to one goal. So my question to you, Oliver, is as you look over the GMA preliminary plans, do you see areas where you would envision change in what the county is going to propose toward the GMA in order to accomplish this objective more closely? I think saying that we're going to accomplish that one to one ratio is pretty aggressive, but we can get there more closely.
There's going to be a broad communication or conversation with our local jurisdiction because they're going to also play a role in how they like to grow in addition to the county. We are going to be really looking at where our current commercial and industrial are zoned and seeing what is happening within the district. We know, and I think we've shared with council that some of the local jurisdictions have through their own decision of allowing, that, that is really a function of demand. But we've seen where housing are allowed in some of our commercial and industrial zones. Those are the type of conversation we're going to be having with our local jurisdictions. And looking at the current areas we designated for commercial and industrial and, you know, working with CREDC, the Columbia River Economic Development Council, and orders to engage in a dialogue whether those are appropriate areas, and if not, what type of land we should be considering both in size and need. I don't know that yet, but we will be having that conversation. Scott talked about investment in terms of infrastructure. That's also going to be a key conversation going forward, access and those type of capital facilities plan. Because it's not so much as, you know, councilors zoning it without any infrastructure, it would take some time for those type of properties to come online. So it's going to be a conversation that we are going to be having with so many partners on what we do going forward. Scott also talked about the impediments, particularly when it comes to environmental constraint of some of the areas we zone for industrial and commercial. That's going to be part of the conversation. What do we do or how do we minimize going forward in terms of the properties that we bring in that they're very less environmental constraint on those? It is very hard to find.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I have, thank you, I have a few things. Has our goal throughout all these planning cycles been the one to one ratio for jobs?
I think that goal, and Scott and Jose may correct me, started in, was it in '04?
Maybe '07. Yeah, where we looked at.
I, I ask because I, I would like to understand how, how we've performed and if we have historically not set aside enough land for industrial use and for jobs. And, you know, I know when there's, there's incremental decisions that go along in between the planning cycles where land can be rezoned from commercial, industrial to residential because with all of this, it's a balancing act of competing interests that we're going to have to make those judgments on. And I would like to better understand, have we, even with whatever industrial land we identified in the 2016 plan, have we, over the incremental decisions that have been made, reduced that further?
So generally, we have, the, the largest component of land we have is industrial. So we have more supply of industrial land than commercial land. It sort of gets to the, so the land supply is there, is it in, in shape to be, is it shovel ready? So a lot, there's land that's constrained. Industrial land develops at a much slower rate than other types of land. So the investment, the property owner can have the 20 acres, but making the investment, bringing the infrastructure and having it sort of developed in a state that a user wants to come in and, and purchase it or bring their employees here, that's another question. And that's one of the things that we, that's the focus that CREDC brings to that. They're looking at that very specifically as shovel ready sites. And we're looking much more broadly at a much higher level. And so that's sometimes where the disconnect is, where our model indicates that we have sufficient industrial land, but it's not in the condition that employers are, that, that it can be shown as ready for employment to begin.
Right. So we may have set aside what looks like enough land, but there's many other factors.
Right. And a lot of.
With bringing it on.
Correct.
Right. And, you know, I was just wondering about risk in the various assumptions that we make. And I know it's leery of going with the higher population number and now seeing that the implications it can have with jobs and land use. I would, maybe Scott, if this is not asking too much, if you, there is a sense of what the risk is with having gone with a higher number in terms of how it can play out?
So I guess the issue here is similar to what I've seen in Portland with the metro process, which is the projection is done kind of top down and not acreage up. So my observation of metro is that they get a, a population projection, translate that into an employment number as if there was an infinite amount of land that could be used, you know, fungibly. Is that the right word? And that's not dissimilar to what's going on here, is that there's this kind of statewide number that comes out with a range. And then you apply that and go, well, what kind of land do we actually have that can actually accommodate jobs? And how much land do we want to, again, develop or convert from one use to another? And that's, that's a real weakness. And it would be a very different process, I think, to say, what do we want the county to look like? You know, from, from the, the land point of view, how much do we want to develop? Again, open spaces versus farmland versus different uses? How much can we really develop industrially? Again, that difference between, well, this block of land is zoned industrial and there are wetlands and the transportation issue and/or power availability and/or, and/or, is that really, you know, 50 acres of land? So that, I think it would be a very, probably more complex, but interesting process to do a bottom up of where we want to be in 20 years.
Well, that, that makes sense to me. And I think the public in looking, in thinking of it, even calling it a comprehensive plan, that looking at it from an acreage perspective would be the more realistic way to do it. And I wonder if there's a way that we can integrate this even if the structure doesn't lend itself to that.
We can certainly try.
This is the last time I'm gonna, these guys are gonna be buying me donuts and coffee, I'll tell you that.
We can certainly try, councilors. Scott indicated, it is very complex because there's so many things unknowns, if I may say, that, that it is still going to be a guesswork, really. Because the information that Scott provides us in terms of construction jobs, manufacturing jobs, retail and so forth, you have to be able to then say, okay, we talked about vacancy rate in terms of what is happening in the commercial office space. We talk about government job, which you know, wouldn't necessarily need land. So there's so many things that you have to consider. We talk about remote work, how is that going to impact the acreage that you may need and so forth? So it gets really very complex, but we can give it a try. So it gets really very complex, but we can give it a trial. I mean, some of the things we've done is looking at employment, employment per acre, but for industrial and commercial, and then use that as the basis to come up with how much acreage we need to support the job we are planning for. And then we go back five years later to, as a way of, does that pan out? What are we seeing and where do we need to make an adjustment going forward? So that's how we've come to the same, similar issue. Infrastructure is one that takes time, as you know. If we don't make that infrastructure investment, it takes time for some of this land to come online. You know, they may be zoned in such a way that it doesn't have access. Access is not limited to just transportation. How do you provide sewer lines and, and so forth to that particular property? So those are things that we have to consider. And when I say infrastructure, unlike what you see across, well, across the river, maybe in Washington County and Huisbro, it is on the sewer line, you see how many inches of pipeline they put on the ground, 50 to more than 50 in diameter. Someone has to invest that and then recoup that cost going forward. So those, those are some of the things we talk about, infrastructure investment. So it's, it's a myriad of factors that we have to consider, not just zoning the land. And we have seen when pressure comes, you have seen some conversion, but not at the rate that we've seen in the past where some of the land were converted to some other uses because of, you know, lack of interest, whatever the case may be.
And then just lastly, I appreciate, Scott, some of the questions you raised, like, related to water supply. And we're pretty much have one source, and that's the Troutdale Aquifer. And I don't know how much or whether there's any real monitoring of the status of the Troutdale Aquifer, but that, I think, would be a significant consideration related to growth. And then the climate change also, there's the, you're right, it's accelerated impacts we're seeing right now. So that'll be another element to consider. That's all.
Thank you, councilors. That's all we have. We have a hearing coming up on August 1st. And as I indicated, we will invite Scott to also be here in person to help answer your questions. And there will be opportunity for the public to weigh in as well as our city partners. And anyone else will be able to testify, provide comment, and hopefully the council will make a decision on August 1st on what, how to move on the employment forecast. Thank you, Scott, again, for coming. Been a, a long time working, working with you on this. So thank you for being here in person. That's all we have, councilors.
Very good. Thank you so much. It's certainly been informative. And Scott, it's always a pleasure to hear and understand your perspective. We appreciate it. Kathleen, let's talk about the future agenda. We had, on our written agenda, to come back and to take a break and come back at 1:30 for a work session on the Baker Telly classification and compensation study. And then after that, to come back for the council time agenda. Do you, is there anything there that you feel the need to discuss as far as making this be a smooth process?
I think, you know, after the 1:30 work session, depending on the length of that, we can potentially adjust the council time agenda at the beginning if we need to move the Northeast 179th Street project and finance update to another date in the beginning of August. But I would wait until after that, that work session, just to see how long it goes. And then we can discuss it at the beginning of council time.
Okay, very good. So at this time then, we are in recess until 1:30 when we come back for the Baker Telly classification and compensation study. And we will be back online at this very place. So see you then at 1:30. Bye-bye.